All right, I'd like to call out, it's County Board Superior meeting order. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Bradford to lead some prayer.
Good morning. My gracious wife, Father, we thank you as mortal God for an hour and a half to sit up today. And Father, we just thank you, oh God, for everything that you've done for this county, these leaders, these elected officials, Father, continue to keep them safe. Continue to give them wisdom from high. And Father, we just thank you, oh God, for the little weather that we had that we didn't have significantly, we just thank you for your blessings, oh God. And Father, we just continue to pray for the businesses. We pray for our first responders, our schools, as our kids go safely to their classrooms. We pray for our nurses, our doctors, our hospitals. And Father, we pray for all our county workers. Father, continue to keep them safe and from any sickness and any harm or any danger as they go forth during their business. And Father, we just pray for any businesses that's coming to Adams County, and that's in Adams County. And Father, we ask, oh God, that let us continue to be a beacon, oh God, and let the finances continue to run through this county, and let your people prosper. Father, we just pray for this state, we pray for this country, oh God. Father, continue to bring us close together, oh God. And Father, we just thank you in all your prayers, Son Jesus, may we pray. Amen.
If you would please, place the flag. A flag, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stop by roll call, supervisor Gray.
Present.
Supervisor Hutchins. Supervisor Gaines. Supervisor Wilson. I am present. Deputy clerk Paige Dean.
Present.
Chancery clerk Randy Lewis.
Present.
More attorney scout Slower. He's here, but, uh, and county administrator.
Present.
Deputy Washington.
Present.
Next item on the agenda, we need to approve the documents. We're going to get a motion. Motion by supervisor Hutchins. Second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Special presentations, if any.
We have combined.
At this time, I need a motion to approve the monthly financial report for chancery clerk and sheriff's office and other offices. Motion by supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second? It's not on there. She said, "Second by supervisor Gray." Any discussion? All opposed? All opposed. No special presentations. Next, we go to county business. First item on the agenda is Atria Armstrong and Pam files. Market Group of Mississippi. Nobody? All right. Next is Patricia's. Okay. Patricia Speed, group health benefits.
We would combine insurance.
If you would, please go to the podium.
So we brought packets back with the rates that you all requested with combined insurance products. We have some products that are a little different than what you currently offer. We have one product that you don't have available at all, and that's the lifetime benefit term policy. It has long-term care built in, with a 50% restoration rider on the death benefits, and it's guaranteed if you spend down on the long-term care portion of it, it's guaranteed you still pay out 50% of the death benefit.
We're only offering three products, the critical illness, disability, and lifetime benefit term, because our products have some extra added benefits in it that are currently in your benefit package. Our critical illness has a mortgage and rent helper. So if an employee misses five days or two months for that critical illness or that cancer, they are given $500 to six months to help them pay their mortgage or rent. And after six months of having the policy, if they're admitted to the hospital, then it will get them a $1,500 benefit of the two times a year. Our disability policy covers mental and nervous disorders and substance abuse disorders at 50%, with no extra cost to have it in our policy. We know other carriers you have to add that as an extra cost. It also pays partial disability. And then, like she said, the lifetime benefit term has the long-term care built into it. We would like to take over these products that are currently on your platform, if possible, because it takes away the confusion to your employees where you do not currently offer more than one health plan, and fathers, you offer more than one of the other plans a year. And by partner with us, we provide you with a legitimate admin system called Employee Navigator, where we enroll the products at. You can see it, your employees can self- enroll the second year if it's easier for them to do that. You get a 4% tech allowance, so the premium that is sold in the group, you're allowed 4% of that premium to speak to any hidden products that you currently have to pay for. And then we can provide you with a microsite that your employees can go to and pull brushers and see the benefits that are offered to you.
Each employee will also get $12,000 of accidental injuries at no cost when we have taken this rail.
And we'd like to offer these at this year if available, if possible.
Okay. Any discussion? From the board? At this time, what would y'all like to do, take it under advisement?
Take it under advisement.
This time, we'll take it under advisement. We'll get back to it later.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next on the agenda is Mr. Francis Ransome, Fishing Radio.
Good morning.
Good morning.
A few months ago, I talked with Kevin Wilson about the idea of having a fishing rodeo, and he said it was a great idea. And he's right. You know, a lot of these young kids never have felt the tug of a fish on the end of the line. And he said, "Go for it." I left here and I went over to Sheriff Patton's office. And thanks to Sheriff Patton, Miss Posy Davis, and Mr. Bernard, we got the ball rolling. And I've been out soliciting prizes and donations from every vendor, every vendor in this town, and I've asked for a prize or a donation, agreed to do it. And Big Bob's out there in front of the mall, he would supply the whole, the things. And we got to get food, hot dogs, hamburgers. And I talked to Delta Bank, and Delta Bank has agreed to let us use their grill. And from what Ms. Davis, Jackie Poser was telling me, the Cajun Navy may be involved in this. I think it's a great thing. And what I'm here for is it will start on March 12, from eight to twelve, at the Natchez State Park. And I got that okay at the Natchez State Park. And the reason I'm here is I asked for, you know, monetary amounts, annual present at this event, you know, because of these young kids, you know, they see older people, you know, in the thorny, and believe me, it means a lot. And, you know, that's why I'm here, asking for, you know, donations. And we figured we probably need about between $3,000 and $4,000 to get us started.
Any discussion?
Mr. Attorney, legally, how do we do that?
Oh, we got a, we got a liability disclosure to free everybody up.
As I gave him the donation form, request list, if you're asking for the county to contribute money, it has to qualify under one of those, one of those blanks. If it does not, then we're prohibited from doing that. We certainly could do a letter of support, you know, saying we think this is a good deal and all that, but we can't give you contributions unless it qualifies under one of those check rules. I don't know if that's what he's asking for, or if he's asking for...
There's another support circulating, you know, with you guys, yeah.
I thought I heard Mr. Ransome asked if the county could give a donation, did you not connect?
Yeah.
So he got to go by the letter you gave him, and if it's, if it don't qualify for something that's on that letter, then we can't donate, right?
That's right. And I gave him the list, so if it can qualify, if you find one of those things that it does, check it off and turn it in to us, and we can request it and do it then, if you have a line. And if it does not, then we would be personally liable for, for that, paying that back. But as far as support, we certainly can give you that.
Well, let me say this. I think it's a great idea, especially because you're talking to somebody that ain't never been fishing. And my daddy used to fish all the time, and boating, all this, and I never would go, but I have learned and talked to a lot of people that fish, how relaxing it is and this and that. So if we can't legally donate, then we need to find another way to make this happen for the kids.
Well, Ricky, what you and I can do is go through that list and all, see if we can get something that fits under it, if that's okay with you?
That's fair.
If that's okay with the board, too, y'all.
And if not, maybe we can do it individually, make a donation individually.
Now, I really appreciate it, but I like more than anything, to have you guys come out and be there.
March 12. Is that right, March 12?
March 12.
Yes, sir.
Each 12.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ransome.
He may be, I would have not. Had to, he in court.
He said he'd be 10 minutes. I'll be right back. He said we'd keep going unless we needed. We can do department reports?
I don't know.
Is this other group that they just come in? You want to wait and scout for them?
Yeah.
All right, the attorney had to step away, so for the moment, we're going to move ahead to departmental reports, whoever wants to go.
I have to get to court, so I'd love to go first. All right, Mary Kay Doherty, Adams County Youth Report. I recently applied for a grant and I received it from Mississippi Public Health Institute, another one. I wrote it for $50,000, we were awarded 37.5. I need a new fund number for this new grant we received. I have also, with that, is going to be hiring a part-time employee, and I've submitted that information as well, for him to be a peer support navigator.
And what this grant for?
This is, it's actually, it's going to be the peer support navigator, it's going to be someone that provides peer support to our drug, drug court clients, youth and family. It is also going to be the person that will be in charge of getting this PHAST team together. And PHAST stands for, it's P-H-A-S-T, Public Health and Safety Team, which will be a team he's going to get together that will be for overdose awareness. There'll be a team that when overdoses happen in Natchez and Adams County, that they will respond to, response to.
All right, so you have two in here, correct?
I have one person being hired, new person, and then I am actually going to be, Judge Brown was supposed to be here with me, but he is in court right now. It does change some of mine that has also been there, and you can contact him, but he's aware of it, that, because I'll be supervising this program as well.
So this is all handled through the grant?
Through this grant, yes. Everything is...
The first one we're going to do is a new hire, Brian Kenner.
Brian Kenner.
Okay. And hourly rate, $20 an hour, annual rate 36.4, and...
Part-time, no benefits.
Correct. Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second?
Yeah.
Second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next is change in hours due to added funding for Mary Kay. Annual rate 22,000, and 22 hours weekly, only changing two hours in the hourly rate. And then...
That's the one that, that's, that one was for Fund 116.
Could you repeat that again?
Changing hours due to added MSPHI funding, annual rate 22058, 22 hours bi-weekly. This was Fund 116. And then she has this other one, is it still Fund 116 that doesn't have a fund number?
No, the fund number is the one that I've just requested, that I need for the new grant, the MSPHI 37.5 that I just received.
Okay, and that's $2,954, five hours bi-weekly. And Fund 132, annual rate 13, 193, at 13 hours bi-weekly. You heard the request.
Okay, these are all from Mary Kay?
Yes. All through this grant?
All through this grant.
Correct?
Yes.
Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion?
So what is the total pay out of the grant?
For which grant?
The total pay out of the last one you called out of all this, for you...
MSPHI grant. All three of these are MSPHI grants.
Two of them are, 116 is not. I'm just changing the amount of hours.
So 116 is 2,058. The fund number she's looking for is 13,193. And, excuse me. Yeah. 13,193 is fund number 132, and then the fund number that she's requesting is $2,954.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
That's all I have today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I get a few of that numbers?
Can I get a motion for the new fund number that she's requested? Second by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay. The intervention court, this morning I passed out from the Department of Supervision, the Accountability Recovery Court, from administrative office, towards the amount of money that's spent versus the amount of money that's been received and back. We're still waiting on January payments, I'm sorry, December payment from them, because this is actually one month behind for the amount of money that's spent. But so far, we've collected everything that we've requested from them, and been reimbursed, so the county hasn't had anything on that one. The MSPHI one that I passed out, so far on that, we've collected everything that we've requested. There was an overpayment that was done in November, however, we've gotten that straightened out this month. And once we receive our January payment from them, we'll be, everything we've spent with them has been fully reimbursed as well. The paperwork that says Harvard at the very top, your representative Cassandra, this morning, she has dealings and issues with some of our participants, but as you can see on hers as well, everything that's been spent so far has been recovered. And we're just waiting on this December payment at this time, if we want to update y'all.
Okay.
I'll leave the box for Mr. Wilson and Mr. Gaines.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me ask Ms. Topless Plan. Under the first appropriations for the home improvement of the ARCA funding, supervisor Milton has one class applicant. I have an invoice, I need board approval to pay for materials. Once the contract is with the material and completes the project, I'll come forward back for you to, for those invoices of completion. So I just need board approval to pay this annuals for material for supervisor Wilson and Alex.
Motion by supervisor Gray.
Second.
Second by supervisor Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Is it, is it the same amount? Are you just...
It was $6,000 or so.
Okay, thank you so much. The labor toll is $4,000, I'm sorry, the material toll is $4,560. That's just for material.
Can you check with her on what you texted me about? She was out.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I have.
She should have had it.
Okay.
Also check with her about another applicant that was sent.
Okay. Has the, with the second appropriation, has it been...
Yes, it was approved today.
Oh, okay.
Yes. All right.
Good morning. May I put key down on one? Actually, I was counting, waiting on, on Skype, but I can go ahead and start. I was requesting a budget amendment for the getting fencing put up, rebuilding, and the cameras put up. We noticed when we went over there, there were people, somebody was coming on the property, they were picking up deer things and all that stuff out there, so I did take it to the advisory board, it'd be approved and voted for to present before the board to try to get the cameras and the fences put up. I sent an email.
Do you have a pause?
Yeah. I have them right here.
And that was just for fencing and the cameras?
Yes.
Did you do the budget amendment for one?
Not yet.
I'm quite sure it's not in their budget, right?
No.
She talked to you, right?
Yeah.
You got an idea where we're going to get them? Okay.
You heard the request?
So...
Motion by supervisor Gray, can I get a second? Second by supervisor Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
I'm sorry, I have a request for a new rehire. Should we say Milton?
It's just a replacement. It's just a replacement. You said to...
Yeah, it's a sure going, it's one.
I just had the one.
Move to the middle of the table.
Okay. All right, has she moved yet?
I think right there.
She moved, make it move.
Scott.
What's that?
I'm doing a request for a new hire. Okay, I need to bring that up, who brought it up? I did get approval, so we can hire somebody else. Also, human resources was supposed to contact me by one of the employees?
Yes, I was going to take that up. I was in a close termination.
Okay, I just...
Okay.
Is that, are those related between the two?
No, I'm just requesting to hire a new person. She was asking me, was it a replacement?
So the question is, if the employees are leaving, if we, well, since she's going to leave, and the fact she requesting to replace them...
Yeah, I think we should just wait until we make a decision together.
That's what I thought.
But even before she left, we...
You were still going to hire somebody else anyway?
Yeah.
So that, they're not connected, so you could hire the new person.
Yeah. It's in, it's in the budget. We already checked into it, we have enough money to hire a new person. So even with that being said, we still got one going to be leaving anyway, so. He's saying we can hire, they haven't left you, but that's going to be discussed later.
All right, on here, you have it checked as a rehire?
Yes, she's a rehire.
What was the reason that she left?
She left for to go on one of those outage jobs, and then worked, and she came back.
She left on good terms?
Yeah, she left on good terms.
All right, you heard the request. Hourly rate, $15 an hour, annual rate 31.2. This has been signed by HR. Motion by supervisor Hutchins. Second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
I have to sign all the papers.
Thank you. Departmental reports.
Good morning. Nene, Department of Purchase Clerk for Adams County. I would like to spread the curate, car and travel part across the municipal pool for December 2024.
You heard the request, Mr. Nene. Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
I would like to ask for permission to advertise the six-month bids for the road parts.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes open.
The last thing I'd like to bring up is about the truck for supervisor Gray.
Is that a sale?
Not quite. So we had two that was on state contract, one was for a 39970, and the other one was for 43646, and I contacted Kurtz, and they said it would be 90 days or more for delivery. So I went to him and checked on a couple other vehicles, and he has several 2024s in stock, and one of them fits the requirements, so he wanted his four, four by four and four door, and it was 43.5, and I have another quote that was for 43.8. So one for 43.5 was more, so...
Quote, the original quote was for a 25?
Which be good.
No, 39?
No, I'd say the 25, your mom.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So are we paying more, or the same for a 24?
So we went to state contract. They had the 2025 for 39750, and they had one for 43 something, that was with the Hemi law. But what I was saying, that's 90 days or more. I spoke to them about it, and they said to check to see, you know, what they had in stock, so they had 2024s in stock. But they are 43.5, and then the other dealership was 43.8 for the same vehicle.
That's crazy, pay the same money for a 24.
This is a better truck.
Is it a better truck?
It is.
Yeah, the 2024 has the Hemi in it, I think they said the 2025 has this new engine that's a turbo hurricane, and it's like through a trial or something, so we bought up all the 2024s, because the Hemi engine was good at the dealership, so we had several of them that can stop, that's ready to turn. So the option is that, with the Hemi, $2,000 more, or waiting 90 days or more for the 2025.
Oh, waiting on that day.
So whatever you want.
I need that.
Make a motion.
Better truck. Second.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
So we're going with the 43.5?
24.
24, okay, thank you. And at the last board meeting, we had to revisit the bids for the shared vehicles, because of some discrepancies, so I have all of the information straightened out now. We had bids from, from Buster Miles, that we asked for twenty-twenty-five.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
We asked, on the bids, we specifically asked for twenty-twenty-fives. Buster Miles in Alabama gave us bids on twenty-twenty-four, which made them disqualified, because it wasn't the part, they didn't meet the specs. Also, they do not have buyback. And that's the other reason. So it was two reasons why they were disqualified on that part, with the marked and unmarked bid. Now, the fan, the price with Enterprise is fifty-seven-two-hundred, no, fifty-six-seven-sixty, and with Buster and Alabama is fifty-seven-two. So overall, they won the bids on all of them with Enterprise, due to the buybacks and the price. So I have the paperwork here, and I'll give it to you, it needs to be signed from the Enterprise, and I'll give that to you. The last thing I have is, we had the meeting for the debris removal bid last time that I went over, and I received the, I sent out the bid form to all of the.
Yeah, we need to take care of that vehicle deal first.
You wanna take care of it, okay. I'm just gonna.
I think that was just. I think that was. Van price. What was the price on the vehicles for the sheriff? You said the van was fifty.
The van is the last one, that's fifty. Van was fifty-six-seven-sixty, that's including all of the privacy glass and upsets and everything on it.
What about the others?
Everything was on here. I've got everything I go on, we can't hear. The, the marked vehicles, fifty-eight-two-fifty, and the unmarked. Ford, twenty-twenty-five, forty-seven-seven. And the two unmarked was.
That is on state contract?
Fifty-two-two-seventy.
Are these state contract? Nothing.
What, is it buyback or something?
Yeah. Enterprise only have buybacks. The other dealership didn't have buybacks.
So you, you get so many miles on them, and then they get a buyback?
You know, they, what they do, what Enterprise does is, they sell them when you can get premium pricing for them, when they get up to a certain mileage. And so, that money that you give, when they sell it, they put that back towards your next purchase. Wrong on that Scott.
That's how they do it.
That's wrong.
So is it what you call it, the way right here?
Yes. And that transport thing, that's something we've been trying to get now for three years.
Is it like, is it like sixty thousand miles?
Well, it just depends. I ain't gonna, they ain't gonna put no, they ain't gonna say that it just depends on how much maintenance that particular vehicle being priced. We got some vehicles now that got sixty, seventy thousand miles on them, but the maintenance is here. We got others with low mileage, and the maintenance is up here. Matter of fact, our F-two-fifty, we have, I mean, our F-three-fifty, I had one ton, it's two thousand fourteen. And it's, it's been in the shop, and it's costing. They wanna charge twenty-five thousand to fix it. That's not reasonable for a two thousand fourteen, to be sell it and get another one. So, yes, but to answer your question, this is what we asking for, yes.
And those are for, what, for the trucks?
No, these are, these are the SUVs. These are, these are, everything is SUVs this time, on my mistake. And a van.
Yeah.
Yes, and Cherokee.
Yep, one Jeep, one van.
Five.
Explorers.
And two, five marked and two unmarked, I think.
Yes, but we lost them because, as you seen in the paper the other day, we lost, that was a twenty-twenty-three that the county actually purchased, that wasn't on Enterprise. That's something the county purchased independently, it's over. The one with eighteen little rigs. So right now, the sheriff office doesn't have a single spare vehicle. Matter of fact, we got some people double up in car, because we got them, the rigs took them out, so. I'm out.
Scott's looking at that right now.
And what we have been doing, just so y'all know, is we've been, some of the vehicles, when they tell us whatever's going on with them, we've been exchanging some things, just to make work to get the receipts. I put it like that.
This is total, I need.
Seven.
Seven, I think it's five marked, two unmarked.
In the van, that right there.
Yeah, five marked, two unmarked.
Seven.
Jeep and a van.
What Jeep?
Cherokee.
We got a Rhineburg rag top?
No. Look, they're all around the same price. Nothing's different. There's something move by.
Scott, you looking it up? Whatever you doing over there?
He's gonna sign it, but he's not gonna send it yet, because they're supposed to send a master.
I got a question. Uh, when they dealing with, I know supervisor Gaines is not here, but didn't he talk to you about a vehicle?
I haven't spoken with him about.
Okay, I'm done with that.
I have to get an approval.
That's the reason I was asking, because he got more miles on the vehicle, he got, he ain't got no more. Because he got.
Oh, yeah, but.
Parks, you want me to give a request? I mean, a motion assigned, Scott or a new board?
Yes, I don't want you to distribute it, because there's supposed to be a master leasing.
Okay.
What do you mean, Scott?
Can I get a motion on the seven vehicles? Second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Okay, I forgot that Stephanie did give me a paper with the, about the same vehicle for you. I had so many things I was presenting, forgot. But for Gaines to get the same vehicle as, as you have, I have the paperwork for it, and I guess they just need to vote on if they're gonna get the same.
You do have paperwork?
Yes, yes, I have. I have it up here, I forgot I had it. It's the same vehicle as supervisor Gray, forty-three-five, it's the twenty-twenty-four, man, fifteen-hundred. We took that four-by-four Hemi first. I didn't know if he was gonna present it or not, I didn't know if he was gonna present it, so it needs to be voted on, I guess. They're gonna approve it. And he's not here, so I didn't know if we're gonna be presenting it or not.
What y'all want to do?
I ain't have no problem with it. I mean, if he didn't, he ain't really got an emergency or something. I tell you what we gonna do. Tell you what we gonna do. Text supervisor Gaines on the phone, Mr. Attorney, text him on the phone, and ask him, is he familiar with what's going on? Because I know he said something to me about it, I thought he had talked to her, but he talked to you. He talked to her. So, my only thing is this, is if we gonna do it with miles, we're gonna do both of them at the same time. And if we not gonna do it, that's fine with me too.
You want me to ask him if he's gonna do it then?
About the truck.
It's the same vehicle.
Yes, and they do have two. Okay.
What are we gonna do with his current vehicle?
We gonna do with both of them.
I want Mr. Gray. I think Warren's.
I mean, I just want to make sure.
Do we offer seventeen thousand?
Well, that was on his, Warren's has got more miles.
Warren, I have Brian that one.
His four, Warren's five, it's completely different.
As long as we making it more money, you know. You don't think so?
He got more than that.
Okay, we'll figure out that one. So we'll wait on that message for a minute, and is that all you have?
I have one last thing we had, our debris removal bid is the last board meeting, and we announced to one, and I received an email from CTC Disaster Response, which was the second lowest bid, and they was asking if we consider to award them as a secondary contractor. So I told them I would bring it to the board to see if that's okay. To have a backup contractor, the second lowest bid of CTC.
Scott.
What's that now?
Okay.
She did debris removal. We opened the bid, the second lowest has called her and requested to be the second option.
I don't know of any second options today. I think you just accept one.
Okay, I told him I had some good. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Departmental reports. Yeah, we, hold on one second, Sam. We're gonna go back to, where did I put my general? Adrian Armstrong and Pam Fowles?
Yes. And I want to recognize also my colleague, Mr. Homer Braylock, as well.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Again, my name is Artie Armstrong.
You spelled it wrong over here, that's why I had trouble with it.
Wow.
There you go.
All right. I am a health insurance broker out of Jackson. I have two of my colleagues with me, Mr. Homer Braylock, as well as Ms. Pam Fowles. Ms. Fowles is gonna also get into a presentation. I just want to make brief introductions. I have a lot of ties to this community. Of course, my parents are from this area. Father being originally from Franklin County, and my mother from Jefferson County. Sister was born right here in Natchez, as well as both of my grandparents. When they went on to use the Lord, utilized Wes Funeral Home. And so Reverend Mozick was my father, mother's guide, guy, guy father. And so, a lot of ties to the community, and excited to be here. But Ms. Fowles is gonna talk in detail about presentation. She has over forty years of self-funded experience. And, and so we just wanna add her. Of course, we serve communities all over the state in the group health insurance business, and wanna offer an opportunity to save you some money here. And Ms. Fowles is gonna tell us how we can do that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if this is over or not. We did wanna just talk to y'all briefly, just for a couple of minutes, about your major medical insurance, and maybe looking at it this year at renewal, from a consultative perspective, not, can I go in and snatch it away? But look at it overall, from a claims perspective, and see if there's any way that we can help you out in that regard, and, and getting your claims lowered, or getting your reinsurance lowered. I know the county is self-funded, I believe, and comes up in the next several months on renewal. So if we could get the data and look at that, we could bring you a spreadsheet synopsis back, and see if there is some opportunity to save money. And the way we generally work with public entities is to do a spreadsheet and show all the different line items in your costs, and then just counsel you on if there's a better opportunity. Some of the additional things that we bring to the table, which Homer passed out, is a collective response into your day-to-day administration. And you know, as HR departments get less and less in their human capital in the HR departments, it really lays off an opportunity for you to become more electronically integrated. So we can deploy the systems at no cost, to get you set up directly with the carriers to do feeds, so you wouldn't have bill reconciliations, you wouldn't have paper applications. And again, that would be at no cost for us helping you. Just like I think Leila with Combine spoke before me, if y'all wanted to do business with her, we would onboard that onto the system, and then it'd be an electronic offset, and really take you far into the future on how you deliver your benefits. Also, we have the capabilities through, everybody has a phone, a cellphone. So on that cellphone, we would deploy virtual wellness, where you could hold your phone up to your face, and it could give all of your biometric readings. And that not only helps you on your health insurance, but it also helps you on your workers' comp. Because it allows the employees to see if their high blood pressure is elevated, if their oxygen levels are at the right level, their stress levels, if they do need to go to a doctor. Again, that is another feature that we can supply to you at no additional cost, for looking at your benefits and working with you on your benefits. So we try to wrap our arms around all the day-to-day activities, as well as claims management, as well as electronic management. If we came back to you and Blue Cross was your best option, we would let you know that. And if you wanted to work with us to get all these additional capabilities at no additional cost, we could be your broker. So just wanted to lay that out. We've got it in some printed material in front of you, and would like to take any questions on this.
Anyone having any discussion?
It's a lot to think about.
So, so you need us to give you authority to do what?
Yes, sir. So what we would just need, if you wanted us to look at the medical plan, look at the claims, look at the self-funded program, authorize the data to be released to us, we could give you a BAA, a confidentiality agreement in exchange, and transfer the data in a secure setting. But that is what's required to look at quoting on the products, is getting data. And so that will be on your medical. If you wanted us to look at your dental vision, we could do that as well. You know, if we're looking at it on the medical, we might as well look at the other products to see if there's a good bit of savings on those. Generally, with the marketplace now, we can find a good bit of savings in addition to implementing these technological aspects that I just discussed.
So, so what I'm hearing, if we give you authority to look at this, and it come back that we got the best deal we can get, then we don't owe you nothing. And if it come back that you can save us some money, then you would be looking for us to do whatever.
Yes, sir. Your question was, if we come back and we say Blue Cross is the best option, you wouldn't owe us anything. But if you wanted to move forward with some of this other stuff, in addition to staying with Blue Cross, you could transfer my authorization to do business with us. Homer and I both are licensed at Blue Cross, and we could help with all that. In addition to doing all of your open enrollments, whether that is electronically or in a paper setting, we would always suggest to look at electronic methods. They're the most secure, they're the most cost savings and time savings for your personnel. And they're deployed with no cost. So I think, you know, that would be a big benefit to the county. If you're doing anything from a paper standpoint, to allow us to help you get out of that mode, and be in an electronic setting. Did that answer your questions, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Just one last thing that I'd like to show y'all, that we. Just one last thing that I'd like to show y'all that we would do. We would have everything QR coded. So this would ensure that your annual government notices that you're required to give out to the employees, you could deliver it in a QR code. And the benefit that that does for you, instead of you having to print those out, all these government notices that you're required to get out, you could send out a notice to the employee. Your annual notices are now conveniently located at the QR code. And that's a living, breathing QR code. So if we need to, say if the government issued an ACA change, we could just go in on our computer, update that notice, and you're in constant compliance. So you don't have to worry about getting out another piece of paper or getting the paper down to Public Works. Because everybody generally has some type of phone, cellphone, and this is scannable through any type of cellphone. And then we would also develop you an employee handbook and it would be branded with all of Adams County stuff at no cost. Go through all the products and that would reside at the QR code as well. So, you know, just a lot of new innovative stuff out there that you could take advantage of. Any other questions? Mr. President, any questions?
Nobody. No questions.
Her renewal period is what, April first?
April first.
So, so if we was gonna do this, then we need to go and do it now?
Any chance of it, you go ahead and do it now as opposed to, ideally, you would have done it back in November, December.
So if I make a motion, then that would allow them to get what they need to look at to see can they save us whatever?
Yeah, they'll see if there's any additional or different plans that we can do. Y'all will get supplemental insurance, I mean, the reinsurance as well, those claims?
Yeah, we quote that out and we'll bring it to y'all on the spreadsheet to see. I don't know if in the past y'all have had lasers or higher deductibles on a sick person. But we'll look at that, show you what that is, see if we can get that negotiated down. Lasers aren't a bad thing because it keeps a really sick person from getting, increasing the cost on your reinsurance. So, but you want that laser, whoever it is, say I've got leukemia. You want that laser as low as possible.
We've been doing, we had the strategy of the, it's a Samaritan program is what it's called. And they've been able to, if you're lasered, then they've been, they're basically not on our plan. We pay a premium to the Samaritan program and, but they voluntarily get off our plan and that has helped us.
Yeah, and we did that as well, either look at the exchange to see if we can get a subsidy so the premium is little to nothing. So...
Got about a half a million dollar plan in a year.
Yeah. It is the most efficient way, but it has to be totally voluntary for the employee. You cannot, in any regard, intimidate, of course, you know that.
Yeah. It's been a good thing because the employees have really liked it too, so that's...
Because a lot of times what we see, sir, is you might have a thousand, fifteen hundred dollar, two thousand dollar deductible here at the county and we can get those employees on a zero deductible. And you know, when you're sick, what's the best thing to have for a deductible? Zero. So it really is a great option. I agree with that scenario.
What is the board's point?
I'm gonna make a motion to give them an opportunity to move into the next day this town.
Got a motion by Supervisor Gray. I'm gonna use a second. Second by Supervisor Hudson. Any discussion? Only discussion I have. This doesn't block us in the end.
No, no, sir. No, sir.
All opposed. I have seven.
And we look to have our conversation with you by the second board meeting in February. It's an aggressive time, but if we can get the data from the county administrator or the HR department, we can get cooking on it pretty quick, so.
Okay. Thank you all so much.
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll go back to departmental reports.
Good morning, board.
Good morning, Senator Riley. County Executive Service Office. One thing I have for you guys this morning is we're planning on making plans for the sand down and also the American Legion is planning to have their state conference here also. So as soon as I get the dates and stuff, I'll let you guys know and keep me informed on what's going on with that. And that's all I have. Unless you have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sam? Thank you, sir.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Supervisor Gray, Deputy Director of the Emergency Management Division. First I want to do a little spread proclamation. I went aware of the proclamation. Need to spread that proclamation. I think I do. So the president will just assign it Friday. But we just need to spread the proclamation. Also, the state proclamation also. I did email that page and set they had that.
Is it camp? Are you ending it?
Huh?
Are you ending the emergency or is it still...?
Well, they need to go ahead and sign it and put it on the minutes because yesterday our generator went out. So we had to get emergency fix on the generator. So that should be covered.
Yeah, but you also at the same time, you have to stay with it, extend with it.
No, we're just gonna let it go because we got scheduled to go to the same room. So they decided we spread across the middle. It's gonna be a thirty days anyway.
You heard the request. You get a motion. Motion by Supervisor Hudson. Second by Supervisor Gray. Any discussion? All opposed. I have seven.
Also, I'm gonna thank Egyptian Church, St. Baptist Church, Supervisor Hudson's and all the women of Irving and King's Canyon Pantry for their contributions to the warming shelter over the last days. I'm gonna thank those. Also, the employees that came out and helped Corbett and Corvus that came up, hustled the warming shelter. With that being said, I wanna ask the board, during these times when we open that warming shelter or the safe room for that, my staff is the only one that helps to try to man it. And I have limited staff and we trying to run both. It's hard to do running a warming shelter in ELC because that's a twenty-four hour operation along with ELC. I know I said in the past that trying to reach out to other departments and it's definitely probably helping with that, that if we close county offices, you know, I think some of those individuals could come and help out at the warming shelter or the safe room to clear some of my staff to do ELC duties. But I'm gonna need the backing from supervisors to try to help make that work. I know we, I know we say none essential personnel. You know, it's just like doing that, the office test, you know, we want to work, share the department, we still have to work through our full-time schedule. So we just need some help on that because my employees have to pull twelve-hour shifts and, you know, back and back in trying to get to work the next day. So it's kind of rough on my staff and my personnel on that. So I just like to ask the board to give me a little more, give us a little more power to try to help out with that.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gray or discussion?
I think we kind of had that discussion before. Did we have this discussion before?
Well, we did, but I ain't gonna cheat that.
Yeah.
It's like, yeah.
What are you asking us to do?
What I'm saying, we keep closing, when we close the county offices for non-essential personnel, my staff has to man a warming shelter or safe room with my three or four people trying to do that. Then running ELC is hard on us.
So what you want us to do?
Well, some of the other departments...
You wanna ask them?
Well, you should have asked because during a different...
Mr. Attorney.
They said it worked.
Mr. Attorney, if they make a recommendation for the closed county offices due to inclement weather, can we force those employees to go do something different?
You need to make it part of their course and scope of employment.
Say what?
You have to make it part of their course and scope of employment.
So as of right now, it's not. So that mean we can't make them do it?
No.
We, I tell you what we can do. We can send something out to the department heads and for them to ask their employees to assist y'all. I don't think we can make them do it.
What I'm saying, when you talking about a non-essential worker?
I understand what you're saying.
What's the definition of a non-essential worker?
I understand what you're saying, but we can't make them do it.
No, what I'm saying is...
Y'all gotta go anyway.
Right, what I'm saying is, is we considered essential and everybody's not? That's what I'm saying. Like the road department, is they essential or non-essential?
I got the question was, could we...
Make non-essential workers, basically.
So my thing, what's the definition of a non-essential worker? That's what I'm asking. Because I, what's considered a non-essential worker?
Well, you've got emergency management would be essential, the road department and sheriff's deputies would be essential. So people responding to emergencies would still be on call or still be working versus, you know, people who come to work at the courthouse, be shut down so that they're not in danger, dropping to and from.
Work.
Presumably.
Right, so what I'm saying is, how do I, even though we have to open the storm shelter and the warming shelter, we have to do that. So how do I maintain that when I got employees working all those hours that can't? You follow what I'm saying? It's gonna be a safety thing when I don't have a pool of...
I know you have an emergency plan. If you wanted to, if you feel like there's a gap in your emergency plan or we're not doing the services, then we can present a new plan or amend that plan and find workers that are able to travel safely and achieve what you're trying to do. But you can't just have a blanket, you know, anyone can come work, so.
Me, Scott, I think if we, I may be wrong, but in this community here tough times, we had a kind of people in this community that reach out and do whatever they gotta do to assist. I mean volunteer. I think we need to send something out not only to our employees, but to the residents of Adams County and let them know when something like this happened, we need some help. And I think, I may be wrong, but I think some people will come forward and give us some help. And that don't work, we can go to Plan B.
Well, we do that, Mr. Gray. And like I said, when we get down to that, we do that. We do put out on Facebook, Ask About Kids, like you said. When you run in a county shelter, you still have accountability of that because of the liability. So we still have to have a county personnel there to help represent. Jackie Marsall, she represents. She does well. We said it out, but like I said, we just can't make people come. Like I said, I'm just bringing a safety concern to, I don't want to get a predicament to make a decision whether we open a safe room or we man the ELC. You know, that's why I come to y'all. We gotta come up with a better plan on that. Because, you know, this is something we've been dealing with a lot of times. You know, the road department, they do, and so we have all these guys out, you know. And I'm asking for just, you know, anybody to just come and answer the phone to free my person up to do ELC duties. That's all we ask. And Corbett and Corvus, they fill in, but like I said, they still have to do a lot of hours too on that, so. That's just something we need to start thinking about.
I think, other than Facebook or whatever, I think you need to, I just mean saying, send something out to these churches out there.
No, the churches do. They bring food. They do what they do.
I'm just saying, you say you need bodies.
Right, what I'm saying, I need county because when you, the warming shelter is down at the offices of the county and I have to have a county person there to help run it.
Well, but if we did have volunteers, who say you got a team of ten to fifteen people, these volunteers that said they would be on call to help, you could rotate a county person to sit in instead of having four or five.
No, I'm saying, I, my staff has to run the ELC. We have to run the ELC. But what we normally do is we, I move my ELC to the warming shelter to try to, while we're there, we're doing double roles. But it's hard because all of our phones and everything we need is down in ELC.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is if you could just have one person down there that could shift with the volunteers, you wouldn't have to have everybody down there.
No, no, what I'm saying is I don't have everybody. My staff duty is assigned to the ELC. I don't have other people that say you're assigned to the safe room. I don't have. That's what I'm telling you.
I would say this, and it may be totally different. I can remember when Katrina hit and we had all these people here and we had a lot of volunteers, but we had some people from the city that was kind of like, not over them, but they was kind of like telling them what they wanted them to do. So that's a city or county employee trying to tell somebody else what to do. I think we got the kind of people in this community that will do whatever and will free up some of your people, but at least one of them need to be down there being in charge. That's all I'm saying.
No, that's what I'm saying. I have to, a warming shelter has to be run by the county. I have to have somebody there from the county to be able to get keys, open stuff if anything happens. I just can't turn it over to a resident.
That ain't what I'm saying.
My, what I'm asking is...
You're saying what I'm saying.
Yeah, I have one person, yeah.
Well, we're gonna get the one person first.
From your department? You can't turn one?
That person has ELC duties. That person can't be assigned to do his ELC duties at the safe room warming shelter. That's what I'm saying. If I had that capability, I wouldn't be asking y'all that. Because even though every person in my ELC, they're assigned to do their ELC, they're responsible for any intel, any updates, any reporting. That's what I'm saying. When we have to open the warming shelter, I move my whole entire staff there because during those hours of operation, we doing dual roles. But we're limited by our computer access. That's all I'm saying. They do.
Yeah, I love that. We've been here before and the last administrator or whatever sent out letters to different departments. No one seemed to come out and volunteer because I figure they figure it's a day off for them and they gonna take that day. I think like Supervisor Gray said and Supervisor Wes said, we just reach out to some churches, fraternities, sororities. I'm quite sure they'll be willing to come in and, you know, if you give them time, you know, it's hard to say jump up and ask for volunteers. But when you know this weather is coming, you know, you can get them to volunteer. And I'm quite sure they will do it.
Well, I'm saying, I tried. I've been eleven years. I've tried.
Before this weather even come up, you know, because you know it's coming.
Well, it's hard to do that because like we have our weather group. We might say he's gonna get there. So we make a determination the day before and it's hard to call somebody the day before and say, I need you to come here. That county employee. Because when we make determinations, say we gonna close the county businesses, my staff gotta be there. That's what I'm saying, right.
And they make, when they make these determinations, they make two days, three days in advance or whatever to do this. I mean, my wife works at U M V Bank just like his wife does. They got a rapid cast out. They send those rapid casts out to each employee to let them know when that bank's gonna be open, when it's gonna be closed. They share it on Facebook too. So when we close on Sunday, we said we're gonna close Monday for a holiday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Everybody couldn't work yesterday. The roads was open. He called me Monday, I mean Tuesday afternoon at four o'clock. We know about the schools called. Schools called him. We wanna know about the roads. I said, on my behalf, the roads are clear. They're open. He's weather, huh?
I thought I was saying that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But I'm just saying, I think a better system or some way we can notify the employees to let them know that, you know, even though we made a two-day call or we made a one-day call on Monday or Sunday for Tuesday and then say we gonna send something out Tuesday by noon to let you know about Wednesday. You know, I think it's, it's not just what he's saying, get help and this, but it's the essential employees or whatever that's got to come out to work to do and everybody sitting at home on a pretty sunny day.
Exactly.
And we're out fighting fires or doing what we supposed to do on our day-to-day when we could go home too and enjoy our day. And I know that's what you're fighting to. I mean, I just hate to bring it blunt, but that's the truth. That's what's happening.
It's true too. I've heard it a lot of times.
It's a way that we can reach out to each department head or whatever to notify the employees that tomorrow we are able to...
Red, I'm saying this. Say what? Get with the attorney and if we can come up with some legal language that don't violate nobody rights, we are... we will find a way to put it in, in whatever we need to put it in.
I already got it for you.
As long as it don't violate.
You gotta tell the person, his office is shipped from whatever address to three twenty-three.
Do you read that by him?
I'm telling him in front of everybody. I'm saying, you can do that.
And, and I, and I agree with.
I, I believe, I, I understand what you're saying, but at the end of the day, he gonna be the one to say what we can do, not you.
But I have to fulfill y'all's, you know, give me, you see what I'm saying? I need y'all to give me guidance.
I understand. That's why I told you to.
Did you have something, Sergeant?
Yeah, I do. I, I agree with Robbie. I've seen in the past and still going on today, it'd be so many days that these buildings are shut down and the sun is shining, these people can be called back to work. You can give them time to come in or whatever, but they need to be back at work. Like yesterday, there's no way they should've still been at home. No way. If you made that call for those two days because you thought it was gonna be like that.
Correct.
But it should've been something sent out later that they should return back to work. Jackson wouldn't even close, period. All their office was open during the whole time. They never shut down. And I was wondering, well, why are we closed? None of their employees never shut down.
Who?
Jackson. Yeah, but still, they had to go through stuff.
And I understand from, from Brad's perspective, what he has to do. You have to guide to all people, you gotta let them know, this was in my report and something I'm thinking about for two days. You know, you knew, and you knew just like I did, what was it, Tuesday afternoon, then the roads were cleared, nothing was gonna freeze over. You know, it's probably gonna be fine. And I do agree, there needs to be something that, our plans as of now will be closed through Wednesday. County employees, by five o'clock Tuesday evening, you need to check your county email to find out whether we're gonna be open on, you know, like, and that's, because I got calls yesterday, it's courthouse open, people need to go down there and get something, you know, it's just, we, we do, I agree with Rob, we gotta figure out something where we can change those plans along the way. Instead of sending it out forty-eight, seventy-two hours and it fades.
You've got, when school's allowed too, you got a problem with childcare, that can be an issue too.
I know. I got two of them.
Well, well, keep, keep it fine, I don't, wait, 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 we make determination, Rob, to you, you know, to be, everybody across the board make determination because like you're saying, guess what? If, if you got a worker that got kids out and they out of school, and you call them, tell them come back to work, they probably gonna say, I'm taking sick now. Or when you try to tell a person come in at one o'clock, he got off at five, you think you gonna get three hours of production out of him individually. So when I'm, when we, when we make a determination, the, the committee makes a determination, not just me. Robby there, the school, our hospitals, everybody make a determination because when everybody's on a sunny issue to view, the wheel rolled up. You know, a lot of times we say, well, it's sunny out there. Well, it may be sunny where you at, but that person right there in the county got ice down his driveway that hadn't melted. So as emergency manager, we have to make the, the right call at the right time because like I say, if something happens, I, I just don't wanna be on the night watch. If a person try to come out the driveway, I'll ask them.
But like I said, it's a way to change that with it going too, yes.
On the fly, we gotta be.
You know, something that, like I said, the bank does what they call rapid cast.
I, I, I'll be honest with you, I saw it on the news, uh, it might've been Tyler Town, they had a lot of snow and, and I recorded it on my phone and the dude said, well, we were gonna be off, but we gonna come in a half a day. A half a day. We should've, we should at least have a half a day. Because you riding almost every road, our car said, man, what's that right? He said, well, it ain't that bad. We just put some sand on these bridges, whatever case may be. And that sun popped out, it, every, it didn't even look like we had a, a, a snowing.
Whatever they waited to four o'clock Tuesday, getting the call, if they had checked at dinner, I mean, we still knew at that time that it was gonna pretty much be clear. I mean, with the temperature rising, like you said, you gotta make the calls ahead of time to make sure everybody's safe. But still, no, it's a way of changing it too, you know, is what I'm saying.
I got some gifting on all there. Maybe, I don't know if it's defined, Scott, but I heard what you said and I hear what they're saying. Maybe if we define a policy, what is an essential worker, which positions, that would help ease this whole problem. Like at Sheriff's Office, we know who gonna move and who not, pretty much. But if y'all define it for the road department, county whoever, that's essential, was not, that could probably ease some of this back and forth about who gonna show up and who not. So, just a thought. Define it policy.
Mr. Bradford, did you have anything else?
Yeah, uh, also I did, Taylor came down, uh, for the safe room generator, it went out, uh, Tuesday. So we had to do emergency calls to Taylor, Clinton had come down and refitted, changed EC and board, put new batteries and stuff in it. Um, with that being said, we do have a lot of generators that's here. Uh, I, road department, they help out much they can, but they're not technicians. Uh, so I'm, I'm gonna be looking at Taylor, try to get a maintenance contract to serve four generators. Uh, we have the four big generators also, uh, that, they need to be serviced, they need to be, had a load test put on. They haven't been done since we bought. Uh, so right now, they just sitting there going to waste. Also, Partridge Baptist Church, uh, they informing that they no longer want to be a shelter. So we do have that four hundred kilowatt generator there. Uh, I know we talked about moving it to the courthouse, uh, to have backup generator at the courthouse. Uh, so that's something I want the board to sort of consider. Do you want to take that generator, uh, and put it to use at the courthouse or just let it continue to stay at Parkway?
We ain't gonna let it continue to stay there.
So like I said, I did, I did talk to Taylor, they will give us a, a quote to move it and hook it up and install it at the courthouse. Is that, I know we did talk about that a couple of years ago, uh, with that, so if the board wanna maintain that, just let them know and I'll get a.
Well, before I, before I, before I say what I said, uh, what is the reason that they got a generator?
Because they were gonna be a shelter.
Okay, now that they say they're not gonna be a shelter, there's no need for them to keep the generator, right?
Right, but they gotta go somewhere. That's what I'm saying, right now, we don't have a partner, then I just got to, they gonna move out their property. Uh, so that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna try to take the road department, we gonna move it, need to go to a spot where we gonna use it. That's what I'm asking. So if that's something we wanna entertain, put it at the courthouse, we try to get the general, try to find a spot for it and then we get a quote for them to, uh, move it and hook it up. But that's what I'm asking.
Did they have one out there?
We talked about the generator.
You know, somebody came in, Energy I think, came in, wanted to do like a co-op type thing.
It's too big.
Are there any other county buildings that need a generator? Not, let's not worry about size here.
Well, I know. If that place out there where we gonna.
E nine one one.
It's too big.
It's too big. Five thousand foot, we'll take it temporarily, John, we put it somewhere. ISOG use, lose power all the time. And we got twenty persons down there, so if y'all don't wanna put it, you just need to store it temporarily.
It's too big there too, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, so here was my, here was my thoughts, if there were two to three county buildings that possibly needed a generator, would it have been worth our while to sell that generator? And pick up a couple?
Not, because it was, you brought up the grant, mitigation. Yeah, so you gotta use it because you're grant funded. So I think like I said, if, if, the only place we get the figures for is the courthouse. I said, before we kick them, that's the biggest place we can get.
Yes, you can get a quote. It doesn't tie to anything. And then where are we gonna put it? I don't know, because it's gonna be on the high school. It's gonna look like a school bus sitting out there, it's yellow. It's big.
Yeah, but we like, you gotta send it back home.
Well, if you don't have some, the whole thing there. All right, what's the?
Yeah, we'll get a quote on it.
Yeah.
Get a quote. Is that motion Supervisor Gray?
Slow move.
Got motion Supervisor Gray.
You get a quote on moving the generator?
Yeah.
And, and hook it up.
And hook it up.
Second by Supervisor. Gang, all in favor? All opposed? I'll say.
All right, thanks.
Tomorrow and tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Uh, yeah, two things, uh, or three things. The, uh, I've given Scott and, uh, and I've got additional copies here, but basically we've got to amend the two grant agreements of what we're doing to work that Hellwood, the Levy and their group are working on. They, uh, expire in, at the end of the year. And so basically, you've already signed the agreements and all it is, is a review of the pay extended through twenty twenty-five. And, uh, Scott has, has both of those, so I'd ask that you authorize the, the president to extend the two grant agreements that were under and in order, so we can continue to get paid throughout the remaining funds of the, uh, the existing grant that were under now.
You heard the request. Motion Supervisor Gray?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Gaines and to Scott.
Yeah, you, you reviewed them?
Yes. All right. All in favor?
All.
All opposed? I'll say.
Uh, the, the other item is, is, uh, requesting the board, and I, this is something we'll have to discuss, uh, some. But the assessor, uh, has basically, uh, after, removed, um, one of the incentives off of Jones Company's facility now on MLK. Uh, it's a preport warehouse, which is your inventory, uh, tax. The, the state allows for, uh, for goods in transit, so, uh, and most industrial clients have what's called preport warehouse exemption, which exempts the inventory of their, uh, of their goods because of the shipped out, that been produced. So the, they had the incentive for, uh, and for six years, it's been in place. And, uh, and unbeknownst to Jones, the, the assessor basically removed that incentive and they said, they would, why is this? And they sent them the copy of, of Attorney General's opinion from, of the back sheet of Attorney General's opinion from like two thousand and ten or something and didn't realize that, uh, the courts had also upheld, uh, or went against Attorney General's and upheld the decision in, in a two thousand and twelve law. So I don't know what we have to do. We seem to have this issue annually where, where, where we come in and, and there's been a, you know, a reassessment of something done. I can name, give you a list of names that where we've had the same, uh, same issue. But, uh, but they're within the confines of the law, so, uh, have done everything, made their annual reporting, uh, and eligible under the law and have received it for six, the six previous years. And so, uh, I don't know if you just instruct the, the assessor to follow the, uh, the previous, uh, the previous assessment or whether we need to sit down with them and, and look at it because it's, it's something that is just shouldn't be done, it's not their call to be doing. Uh, I actually would be doing that. They should've, you know, in my opinion, this is my opinion, uh, they should've at least contacted the board attorney for, for some guidance before making, uh, making that judgment. Uh, and, uh, and removing that assessment, uh, and, and doing that. So let's say, I've got some folks out on, uh, uh, operating out of MLK that aren't necessarily thrilled with us at the moment, trying to get that, uh, get that resolved as, uh, as best we can. So, uh, I don't know.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. President, let me ask you a question. Now, I'm hearing that you see, uh, they going by a ruling from the Attorney General in two thousand and ten, and y'all have something in two thousand and twelve saying something totally different. So why you just can't give them the information that you got in two thousand and twelve? And they can contact Scott and they can, that, that should be real, real simple.
I agree. Uh, they ha- they have received, they have received the updated, uh, law and opinion and, uh, and still send them the incorrect, uh, incorrect assessment. So I don't know, that's why, that's, that's why I'm here, that, uh, we, we tried to resolve it.
So you'd have been, you talked to them already?
Yeah, us and the company have had that dialogue, I can give you, I'd send you the, the email string, uh, uh, repeatedly. And so I don't know what the resolution is or how to properly, uh, resolve it, but I, I'm assuming an instruction from the board to say, hey, you know, what you were doing in the previous year, that is still, still valid and, and respect this.
That, that, Mr. Scott, so we have something, uh, in writing saying that they can get whatever challenge they're saying that they're getting, right?
Yeah.
We have something in writing?
Yes.
Okay. Why you just can't show that to them? And, and since this board, I ain't gonna say this board, but it happened, whenever it happened, but the board of supervisors did it, why you can't show them a copy of that? And that ain't enough?
Should be enough. They still have to file a petition to reduce because they wrongly assessed the property, tax assessor should. I thought we had gotten this word out, is, did we not? I mean.
They, they're still, there's, as of, uh, yesterday, they were still showing that they, that they, the assessment was still in place. So I, I, that's why, that's the only reason I'm here today. I, I, I'm like Scott, thought having notified them, everybody should, you know, look at it and come to reasonable terms and as of yesterday. Uh, according to, to Jones, is they're still, uh, being assessed on their inventory.
Scott, could you?
Yeah, I'll email and file.
Fan, I was going on, uh, I mean.
Scott, I just sent, I, I, I just sent Scott the most recent string that has most of all of their updated.
Yeah, we would do it ourselves now, but we need the tax assessor has to make the application to do it. When there's been a property or unloosely assessed.
What, what do you mean, we can do it ourselves? They got the.
So we would just go ahead and mo- move and clarify right now?
I don't wanna do it the right way.
Well, what I'm saying, it's not the right way. We can't, gotta have the tax assessor make the application.
I mean, he's elected official just like, uh, me and everybody else in here, so, uh, he need to be over here or whatever the case may be, uh, just do it the right way.
They should do their petition.
All right, so I'll get with Jones to Scott and we can have a high wow with the assessor. Is that what I'm getting?
Tell them, I, I, I think me personally, I think between you, Scott and Assessor, we are big work that, uh, without involving them unless we have to involve them.
We can, we can definitely.
Try it that way first.
Okay. They, uh, the last.
I don't want to say it, but, but, all right, go ahead.
Uh, the last request is, uh, on the utility, the Psychiatric Utility Authority. Uh, it's roughly about a thousand dollars left in that, uh, left in that account. As y'all know, it, uh, it, we've basically cost us about anywhere from twelve hundred to fifteen hundred a month just to operate on an annual basis. And so I'm asking that, uh, that some funds, uh, be transferred into the, uh, Utility Authority. I, I think fifteen thousand will probably get us, uh, get us through the year. As y'all are aware, is this, uh, something, uh, we all, uh, we all inherited, uh, throughout, uh, from a while back. I think all the way back in oh-six, oh-seven, somewhere around the mayor, but it's, uh, it's definitely, uh, uh, in need of, uh, of some cash from y'all. This is something y'all have done, uh, annually for the last few years, uh, as, uh, as the Utility Authority, uh, will crack on. So I'm, um, requesting a fifteen thousand dollar transfer into the Utility Authority, uh, from, um, I guess however y'all done it in the past, as the probably just came out of general, is what I, what I assume.
You heard the request, Mr. Wilson? Can I get a motion? Motion on Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Supervisor Gaines, need any discussion?
Yes, definitely.
It's definitely we. We got this something we got to operate.
So how does it benefit us?
We own it and we gotta keep it. We got we got.
So how does it benefit us? Because we we got I I understand the concept, but we still paying into something in that. What we getting out of it?
It's a good question, Ricky. Right now, so it it was set up.
I understand what it was set up. And I'm not gonna be Mexican, we do without it. But we 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 got a situation where we pumping money into it. And if I'm saying it's wrong, correct me. It ain't getting nothing else, ain't getting nothing out of it. So what are we getting out of it?
It's a it's a legacy that you inherited that from, you know, previous previous commitments. And and so you've got what its major assets that you've got are the former landfill. So you do have you do have an open landfill sale that's able to take construction debris and like rubbish, you could you could you could utilize it for for that. I mean, as far as if you if the county wanted some benefit. You do have you do have some timber, probably if you wanted to harvest harvest your timber reserves that are that are on the on the as an asset of the of the authority, probably not, you know, forty fifty thousand dollars worth of worth of timber, which covers the area from the landfill through the San Catherine Creek on both sides of the of the creek, all the way to, you know, to the Bellwood property. So you've got some some reserves there, but you're maintaining you're maintaining basically that landfill and and wetland areas and floodplain areas that the county inherited. Of course, you know, the original plan, which was which they tried to do in oh six oh seven, was, you know, to be to be a operator. So the idea was eventually to operate the some of the facilities, the water and wastewater facilities for the former International Paper, which would have generated revenue for for the client, which at the time was Rent Tech, if you remember remember all that. So it's a it's inherited asset that until it has a a cash producing customer and, you know, someone of that magnitude, that, you know, it is, it's gonna it's gonna run you, you know, fifteen fifteen twenty thousand dollars a year. It's just part of.
It was crazy. I I I try, don't think that I'm against that, but when when I wasn't part of the board, but when it kind of made those deals, to my knowledge, it kind of had money then. And our money is not like it used to be then to just keep pumping money into something that we not getting money out of. And and maybe we need to think about cutting something over there to try to generate some funds to keep paying that fifteen thousand dollars a year. If we can stop trying to get it out of a general fund, we really don't have it.
Look.
Could you look into that?
I will, I will, I'll look into.
I mean, if it's a bad idea, don't look into it. If it's a good idea, look into it. I'm just trying to find a way to keep what's going on over there going on and and not hurt us too.
Right. Yeah. The only problem, Ricky, is I don't know. So if you just said, ah, you know, you still you still have the it's your property. I mean, and and so it's it's not going anywhere. It's not marketable, you know, it's it's wetlands or environmental property that, you know, is just in reserve, is sitting there. And that's and that's something that that we've got. I didn't say I liked it either. It is a situation that ran over in order to keep operating just as inexpensively as we can. And that's that's why I'm here today.
I get you. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning. Go ahead.
First thing I have, I'm gonna thank everybody for the work they did over the last fall and what we had and the jobs they did.
Thanks, Scott.
And Mr. Hutchins, I'm gonna thank y'all for the two, Scott, I really appreciate that. First thing I have is a solid waste grant with it should be up there fifteen thousand seven fifty seven sixty one.
What was that, Ricky?
It's a solid waste grant of fifteen thousand seven fifty seven sixty one cent. This grant applies for.
You get a motion?
Yeah.
I moved that we applied for that fifteen thousand and how much?
Seven hundred fifty seven dollars and sixty one cents.
Seven hundred fifty seven dollars and fifty seven cents.
Motion by supervisor Gray, can I get a second? Second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
You have a waste tire grant reimbursement for one thousand one hundred seven dollars.
So move? We planned for that too?
No, that's just for us to get reimbursed.
Reimbursement.
Looked out and delivered.
One thousand one hundred seven dollars.
Can I get a motion, please, for waste tire grant, one thousand one hundred seven dollars? Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Next thing I have is the four-year road plan. If everybody's had a chance to track this plan up.
You got that resignation?
Yeah, I got it. I'm coming on.
All right.
Come down, I'll leave. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, we need.
We didn't approve last week, so we had finished writing and then we'll finish.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion?
I I just wanna say that I don't wanna go on record saying that I I've been to Jackson Point because I have. I have not been to Jackson Point, so I'm gonna make that clear.
Correct. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
We have a yearly meeting, eight one one meeting next Wednesday. At the convention center next week, for all employees to show up for that.
What time is?
I forget, I think it's eleven. I'm emergency sure, maybe eleven. But it's next Wednesday, it's twenty nine. Then you know our road department.
Yeah.
It's certified for.
Right, right.
So.
Should be there.
We have to call eight one one before we did.
So the question is, who are all supposed to attend this?
Emergency response, road department, things like that. What, you know, they go through some mock drills or, you know, what happens if something happen, have explosions or somebody gets a gas line, you know.
Well, well, the question is, we want to make sure that the people that need to be there is there and the people that don't need to be there don't need to be there.
Well, I'm asking for the road department, we need to be there. So that's that's what I'm here, yeah.
Yeah. Y'all have to go through there.
Yeah.
Yeah. We just want the departments should be there.
So I need a motion to approve road department report.
Road department, I think it's E nine one one.
E nine one one share probably expired.
That's what I'm saying, we need to make it. Motion. Motion. So move? Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Thank you. Employee's last day was January sixth, twenty twenty five. His name is Ron Delmo. And they informed him he won sixth, twenty five. HR has all this paperwork and stuff and put a copy to Wex. And I'd like to ask that advertise for this.
First, we need to accept this or? No, he didn't. Right. Okay. Motion by supervisor.
Second.
Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
Scott? Discussing.
Yeah, if you want to do it, pending, we will review it.
I had a guy come by office yesterday and drop off, and we do six month of yearly bids. He's got a mining pit, just got his permit on, he's got gravel and dirt out. And he come by and dropped the price off of what his price would be per yard, per gravel.
Or us to buy it from him?
To buy it from him. And we do our yearly six month bid, but it's a lot of savings. It's it saves the county a lot of money with this price here. But I just looking at legal or talking to Scott about it, what can we do to purchase from this vendor?
I'd like to look into how we can use it because it could save a lot of money.
A lot of money.
Yeah, because we being a little charmed right now.
Well, that's what appears.
Say what?
So that's what it appears.
I already know that.
So approved legal advice, I would like, you know, once we get legal.
Prove pending legal review, if that's okay with me.
I make a motion to get attorney to look into this matter. And if it's legal, then give me some warning, man.
Approve his request pending legal review.
Okay.
Yeah, motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Scott, I just wanna know, when we do six months, year and six month bid, do they give the previous contractor ties to us? You know, I know since I've been in which it's a it's a significant savings, but they wouldn't owe myself a little gas, that's what you're looking for.
That's right, we'll make sure we don't get sued or we not do anything.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? Eyes out.
That's all I have. Any questions? All right.
Good morning. I just have two things. One, next Wednesday is the needs assessment report. We've been putting that out to the public, brought it to you at your first meeting in January, although we told you about it in December. It's nine o'clock at the Matius Grand, it'll last hour, hour and a half tops. I don't know if for all of you to be there, you have to have a called meeting. I don't know that, but I thought I think I need to run that out if you all want to.
What's the date?
The twenty ninth at nine o'clock. You have all gotten an invitation. I've sent it out to Matius Inc., Matius Now, Rotary, Kiwanis, all schools, Chamber of Commerce, a lot, just a lot of business groups. And I asked people to send it out to other groups to since it is a community of interest. My second, just real quick, Scott, I don't know if you've had time to. We're trying to do several things now as the New Year's going. Talk to CCA about the sales and what we can do about that. I think we've talked about that in the past.
Yeah, my recollection was that CCA and the engineer that we had talked to were supposed to come back to us. Is that how you remember it, Chair?
Well, on his part, he said he was gonna come back and we review it. But on our part, we just need to hear, you know, seeing whether we'll take possession of it or not.
And that before we took possession, we wanted to know what our liability was, expense. If we can't do anything, how much it costs us to dispose of it. Which is what the guy was supposed to come back.
Sure. Well, we can get we can get a lawyer.
Why don't we reach back out to him? Because it wasn't supposed to be that long, but that it was November, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess holidays could sneak up on everybody.
Yeah, we'll we'll reach back out. I know it's feeling that freezing up here in New York, we'll we'll.
Because we don't wanna stop trying to do a lot of this.
Yes, I'm sorry. Y'all don't wanna take possession of something that's surprised, now we got to pay fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. I'll see you all next Wednesday at nine. That was it. Oh, oh, and one other thing, soil testing, I know you approved it. Where are we in the process of?
What's that now?
The soil testing. Where are we in the process of that?
Kevin was supposed to give us back with the name of soil tester. Because one of them.
Now I gave you the.
Both of them were just so they basically had a subcontractor do it. So he was supposed to give us the name of the client.
Okay.
That would probably save us money, so on a class for that. And I asked him last week to ask him again. The board has approved it, we're just looking for a right.
Good morning, Board. We've got a couple new hires that you have. I think for some of these, any of those.
I've got, you want me to call what I've got?
Yes, sir.
I've got Christopher McIntyre.
Yes, sir.
New hire, deputy sixteen eighty one, an hour thirty four nine sixty four. I've got Robert Irving, thirteen twenty three, twenty seven five eighteen, annual. Yeah, correct, Officer General. Deputy Sheriff Patrol, Garian King, sixteen eighty one an hour, thirty four nine sixty four, annual. And Alicia Wimley, Sergeant and Investigator, nineteen eighty eight an hour, annual forty one three fifty four. All of these have been signed by HR. Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? No discussion.
This, I know.
Is that in the budget? This replacement?
I know, I I remember, I know it was put you back forth with women that she resigned and went and went over.
She she did. She left in good standing and went to.
Yeah.
McIntyre resigned and.
Yeah, I know.
She did some private stuff. And then Urban resigned and went to drive trucks. All three of them are essentially rehired, but.
Yeah.
Yes, so they're all coming back into open slots that we have. This will put us completely fully staffed except for one more kind of position.
Okay, no, I was just making sure everybody left of this and, you know, because of policy.
But it didn't say rehire those lot. But it did. Wait, no.
Any discussion?
It did. Two of them did say rehire. Three.
Should have been Emily McIntyre.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
All right. Same discussion.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.
We'd like to ask the Board, we just had a two thousand twenty three truck involved in an accident and was totaled. And we'll want to ask the Board if we may be able to replace that truck with a new bid. Vehicles that we that you have approved today, that we only have one spare vehicle. With these new hires that we have, we do not have any spares whatsoever. So we have not been fully staffed for quite some time, so it has not been an issue. Um now it is, we will not be able to have enough vehicles for the, the road deputies, and it would be replacing a patrol vehicle that, that we need. Um that's, that's what we're asking the board if you'll allow us to rebid or state bid, uh another truck to replace the truck that we just opened.
Uh how much money we got for the insurance on that truck?
Yeah, I couldn't get that, that was my question though, is do you have money in your budget for it?
Well, we don't have any money for vehicles in our budget at all.
Yeah, so you need to make a budget increase request.
Unless they take one.
Take the ones, this year, so they'll take that one.
Unless they take the orange truck.
Got a orange truck?
Say that again?
Orange truck.
Do, do we want it? Oh, yeah, absolutely, I'll take, we'll take it, cause we don't have. They're saying take the orange truck in place of buying another vehicle to replace the patrol vehicle. Oh. Well, but that may create, that may solve problem number two, so I'm gonna go ahead and bring that one up.
We only get one problem at a time.
Alright, so this is one big problem, how about that? Terry, Terry's truck, two thousand thirteen, F three fifty, uh which is what we use to pull all the motors with and do all the maintenance. It needs a motor replaced in it, it has a five seven, I'm sorry, six seven diesel. So the bid or the quote to replace the motor on it, which has got a hundred fifty eight thousand uh miles on it, is right at twenty thousand dollars. Uh Enterprise gave us two bids, one for a two thousand twenty five F two fifty, six seven four by four crew cab for sixty four five. A two thousand twenty five S three fifty, six seven diesel, four by four crew cab for sixty five eight. However, uh Kirk has a two thousand twenty five Dodge twenty five hundred four by four crew cab with a six four on state bid for forty three two. So we can get a, replace the motor for twenty thousand or get a brand new one, which is essentially the same thing, only a Dodge on state bid for forty three.
Keep in mind, Terry isn't doing all the heavy lifting every time y'all call.
That truck was seized too, wasn't it?
No, sir, that's a trash truck.
We still got seized trucks, all these too.
Oh, this is the white.
Yes, sir.
How long the truck down there, you getting seized a bunch of them down there?
He's working on season some more.
Any diesels?
Yeah. Well, what, what we do, we, we have a case right now, where we've got uh F three fifty, uh we need four of them.
I finger crossed.
Uh we're, we're waiting to see how that kind of. But that, those are the two problems that we have, that we need some guidance on how to address. We got a patrol vehicle that's towed that we need to be replaced, and we have a, a very essential maintenance vehicle.
I don't think.
Need to replace the motor or replaces it.
I don't think supervisor Gaines' truck would be good to pull the motors every day.
Yeah.
So it's hanging on that.
The motor's got some weight on it, one of them moves, it's a diesel motor, and more, and that's something that is.
So we're looking at anything for that wreck truck?
It, it just got wrecked, supervisor Gray the other day, and so the insurance hadn't sent out what they gonna pay off on it yet, so we, we had information.
So we not even paying for that truck?
No, no.
You don't know whether you had enough to cover your debt, missing it.
Yeah, but they, the body shop has already told us it's towed though, because of damage to the frame, so.
If you're upside down, it's a loss.
It is, F one fifty, what is it?
Uh Dodge fifteen hundred.
That's the one that's towed, that's like the ones you owe, that's the one like supervisor Gaines drives, sells whatever.
How many miles on that truck?
The one that was towed?
Yeah.
Twenty seconds.
See, that truck was for super rated where I'm sure yours is not.
If they're asking for more money, that's. If they're asking for more money.
Uh you guys, supervisor, if, if we could, I think we can make, we can try to figure out, if we were able to get supervisor Gaines' truck, we could move some vehicles around, take equipment out and put something on, on, on the road. One of the admin trucks. We can start it, put it on the road, and then Hughes, that one has an admin vehicle, that will keep them out of the purchase of.
You have a hit that?
Yeah. What's our timeframe on that other video?
Which, which other video?
The F three fifty.
It, it's, it's, it's leaking all the bad now, he's limping it till we get a solution.
He talking about the one y'all trying to do something with.
Yes, sir, to the Terry's truck.
No, he talking about.
Oh, the other one's out of, out of commission?
No.
Oh, well, we have vehicles down there that's two, three years in it, I mean, it just, that's the bad part about seasons, it just.
It takes a while.
You don't know when, and it may not get the warranty, it may.
Can it bar for a while?
It, it, you know, it just depends on what happened in court with that, you can think on that. But if, and we get it, we definitely won't be settling, we'll keep it for sure, cause we, we, we're working trash group, y'all.
Well, if you get one, you need one for, for the dang uh, for that heavy thing you put in the bag. What can you put a base line in that truck for? What's the uh? Board?
Well, if you look around the building, all the oil that you see in parking lots. That's from that, that's from our truck, all the oil you see on the ground in the parking lots, that's from our truck, every time you cut that truck out, it's blowing oil. I mean, every time you start it up, it's blowing oil, so.
Just put oil everywhere.
With, yes.
We need a budget request, right?
Um I think for right now, we need to wait to hear from the insurance company before we can make a decision, cause this would be pretty much.
She talking about the wreck truck.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But I'm talking about to buy another truck.
So Sheriff, it, so, so is the motor bad or you, it's just leaking oil? No, it ain't leaking oil, it's blowing, it's shooting it back up through the pistons, uh according to the, and we got that diagnostic here. And it, and everything from the shop, but they saying it's blowing oil up past the pistons, it's blowing. So what is that, what kind of engine in that truck?
Six seven.
Six seven diesel. Four, eight, three fifty, six seven diesel. What they say on seven and eight in the back? What the thing say, seven and eight, and that could be a turbo on it. It does, it has turbo on it. Well, if the turbo, uh those trucks bad by seven and eight, but the turbo bad on it. If the turbo bad, a turbo, I mean, it shoot oil out the back of it and do that, and I know a turbo, you know, you know, probably about fifteen hundred dollars.
No, it's.
Motor. Blowing it, I believe, he got, we making them park on grass as much as possible.
Yes. Oh, yeah, that's a, that's, that's not the wreck truck though, that's a, that's the one that he's driving, the eight three fifty.
I don't know, I just get uh. Oh, yeah, I see. No, I just thought it had a diagnostic on it.
You look at the back.
No, they didn't put it on there, I thought it was. I thought it had a diagnostic, I don't know what was wrong with it.
That's the thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, I mean.
You got that video, that's how it looks.
So, yeah.
It just. So it's just. Be up over here to the ministry, what we, what we can rob from they need, we definitely buy that, that'll grab a country truck. So we gotta figure out something. That's a everything truck. Yeah. Everything, anything y'all act move, that's a move it, that's one vehicle we got that to do with something.
Same bid is forty three two, and then for replacement of the motors from that.
Well, we, we even downgraded on the truck though, now, look at that again, we downgraded on the truck from the F three fifty to like a twenty five hundred series. Just, just trying to save kind of money. It, it.
Yeah, twenty five will put it. That twenty five will put it.
Yeah, it'll put it.
Eight point five, that's a diesel too, though.
Yeah.
Let me just say it's pulling.
You'll do what we need to do. Yeah. And that's why we saying on the other truck, we can move some people out of some vehicles if, if you give us your truck, and that way we won't have to buy one. We just, we just had to wait till another year, so if we got your truck. So it just.
You wanna get my truck, get my truck on, now.
We know, we, we, we got, oh, you can one of y'all trucks.
He got a real truck.
Huh?
He got a real truck.
I know he does, I see him.
He got a hemi. I ain't had no hemi.
All else feels good in.
Probably nice and good, okay, he keep forwarding.
So I, I guess the only thing, wait on the insurance is if we can get a decision about the two thousand thirteen truck.
Y'all wanna fix it or y'all wanna? Y'all wanna fix it or y'all wanna give it something, it's up to y'all, so.
Either way, it's gonna be, take a budget request.
Yeah, I suppose you need to know which way it's.
Yeah, no, need to know which way to go with it, cause.
You gotta have a plan.
What, what we needed to.
What model is this truck from, two thousand thirteen?
Two thousand thirteen.
A hundred fifty eight thousand seven hundred seventy seven.
I would set it as he doesn't go on, but that's up to y'all though, that's just, that's up to the board, y'all wanna do. But y'all know how much that truck get work, so that, I don't think it'd be a head shit if I worked more on that truck, so. Yeah, but, and it's worth more than that truck you gonna sell too. It is. It's just a diesel, it ain't, it ain't got the same, it, it don't have the same value that your other truck got. Yeah. No, it's, it's a diesel. Yeah.
Yeah, twenty five?
I don't know what to do, cause that diesel engine is a. I was prepared to avoid it, that diesel truck is a hundred percent better than.
That diesel no way.
All right, what we gonna do?
It got a diesel engine.
Well, we gotta have a budget, man. Oh, we talking about if we're gonna do the motor or the?
Yes, sir. I mean, I, I'm gonna try to run a battle on the.
Thousand dollars. And then next time it comes up.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking where, who we gonna get the money from? Uh next, Scott, you squeaking your eye, you squeaking your eye.
Money tree.
Just running out, just running out of leaves.
Yeah. What we gonna do?
Well, I think we can save another hundred and sixty three thousand these projects that pre, most of them. Yeah, we can save another hundred sixty three thousand from that, uh of, of the two projects that you and I.
What we gonna do, come on, man.
Need a motion.
My.
So a hundred sixty three thousand.
They say a hundred sixty thousand, uh.
And then make a motion, they gonna work it out.
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion, we got some savings, I'll make a motion.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Truck, what you making money on? Forty three thousand for the Dodge twenty five.
The Dodge, the state bid.
Second, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion?
That's, that's all I've got.
Is that eight vehicles today, no last anymore?
It's the last one, nothing else share.
That might be done, actually.
Don't put a motion. Don't, don't put a motion on supervisor Gaines.
You'll need a motion for that, you'll need a motion for that.
Yes, sir.
You'll get it anyway.
So I would.
The Dodge, uh.
She said we was gonna say.
We got finished it.
Yeah, I was discussing.
Send me, email me.
Yes, ma'am.
No, it was in the discussion. So, so you know, say on those projects, we gonna save a hundred and sixty thousand cheaper. No, just, we just. We'll, we'll have some, some savings that we can figure something out, anyway, all right, what you came up with?
All in favor, all opposed, eyes out.
I promise you, that's all I have.
Michael, we have to explain the.
Has y'all any questions for us?
That's it.
Thank you.
Uh I don't have no question, but. What's up with the cameras, uh we got an update on them, cause do we have one up Broadmoor, when you go down to the little dip, they throwing all that trash?
I would have to find out what we got in Broadmoor, but they have been here this last month installing, because they have the new locations in the city, in the county, that they've sent me the links to showing that they are up, so they come almost every month and put the soda in, and then they come back and put soda in. So I will check on Broadmoor, I don't know down there, cause I know the last time we talked about it, it was needing power source and all that, but, and I need to just find out, so. I'll find out by the end of the day for you on Broadmoor camera. Yeah, if we could, that did, excuse me, uh find out, because what, there's a question that I had, uh cause some of them needed the light. I've been to Broadmoor utility and asked them about it, cause we, as a county, instead of have residents asking for, to put a street light, cause it is dark going off that bottom of. As a counter, we not allowed to pay for street lights, so, but I talked to one of the board members uh a few weeks ago during the holidays, and I, I know Broadmoor has a program that they add so many lights, and I told them, asked, could I get on the agenda, uh could we do that, and part of that, I was hoping, uh I told them that one of the questions was, could we get a camera, so I mean, I was late for the meeting, and uh, it wasn't after later, had some personal stuff going on, but uh, anyway, uh I want a light, cause I was trying to get a camera, and we are, I talked to Scott about it, and he said some of the thing is like, uh having booth don't be able to press the charge or write the tickets for that, because you know, I try to have uh.
You talking about the trash?
Yes, trash in, we just need a good idea of what.
If it's on camera, we, we can get a new one every time, we'll do it.
Well, cause uh, cause you know, that, that's a, that's a thorn in my flesh out there, that means a thorn in my flesh everywhere with trash being dug out. But I got a few uh constituents out there, and you know, that they just feel like I supposed to get the trash up over there, and uh, so we are trying to figure out a way that you can get, you know, for you can have folks to, that we can kind of monitor and catch those folks, cause I, you know, and I said, and I said on camera, I don't think folks drive from one end of town to the other end of town to trash up one person neighborhood, I think people passing through or going through, and they drop their trash out right there, and I can promise you, uh I call and have it picked up, they've been good about picking it up. If I have that trash picked up, uh on today, just say if I call your office and ask them to pick the trash up tomorrow, if they can, they'll pick it up. And when we get back by Tuesday, there's just as much trash back down there, so you know. I got something new coming though, we're changing, and we're changing how we investigate things at Sheriff's Office, and we've gotten some funding from that, that, you know, that dedication we work and we using it to pay for certain technologies. So now we're getting ready to incorporate AI into our identification process. I just was on a demo yesterday with Clear, I've Clearview AI, and I sent him a picture of this of, in the vision, they've done a lot of stuff here, and you will be amazed at how many things that, that AI was able to find in places this guy went, just based off his pictures being in the background, things of that nature. And so the system allows you to upload pictures and videos to it, so you can identify the person a lot quicker and like easier, like. When I sent that picture, that, that system picked that guy up in less than sixty seconds and brought like eight pages of places he had, he had showed it every day. So that's gonna be helpful for the trash, like, like you send those videos, things like that, we can upload it, we'll be able to identify quickly and, and be able to move it more swiftly, and get you tickets, warrants, or wherever we gonna do, so. Yeah, well, and that, and, and eighty four number one, and I know y'all get some calls too, from where they going to the dump, I, I mean, you know, they littered all over. But those spots right there, you have constituents, and I do understand that people trying to keep the neighborhoods up, and you got people dumping trash, but eighty four number one, I rode out there, it hasn't been quite as bad. Here, Red Loop, it hasn't been quite as bad here lately, uh on eighty four, but Red Loop and Broadmoor, they, they, they have been harmed. I ride the three roads you named every day, just to see how bad it is, cause I know, maybe we figure it, it, you know, later on, it's gonna be back to good, so with, but with this, with this new, this new technology we gonna incorporate, that's gonna help that problem a lot.
with this new, this new technology we gonna incorporate, that's gonna help that problem a lot, we can't go reach, my struggle for days to put a face to a name, uh, put a name to a face, this new system, it hits it, I mean, almost instantly.
Alright, I appreciate it, sure.
Before that, thank you, y'all have more questions for me?
Alright, it's time to come to the title. Public comments, nobody here. Mr. Randy, could you, uh, y'all sent out that, uh, information about the scholarship, county scholarship to the elected official?
And Scott, um, what are we gonna do about this problem on Southview, I mean, it's out of hand, um, it got worse, the guy really don't have no respect for the law, doing what he want to do, they say it's state property. Uh, I'm city dealing with it, man, and, uh, we got all kind of drugs going down there, and they got the people complaining about it, so I'm bringing it to you, uh, it need to be mediated.
So what, we'll do, reach out and see if we can actually chat with the Secretary of State.
We didn't did that, right?
The law allows us to request permission to clean it up, and may give us permission, but they don't pay for it, that's just gonna continue in perpetuity in this guy's.
Well, at this point, Scott, I'm gonna be honest with you, once we clean it up, even though it's state property, I'm gonna make a motion that we put a damn chain across it, because I'm sick of it.
Put a chain across what?
Where they can't get to the property.
Well, you could, you're banning that portion of the road.
That ain't no, that, I'm talking about on the end down there, I ain't talking about the turnaround end, I'm talking about actually the state property, where these people housing three thousand ties, old mobile homes, and all this kind of stuff, and everybody know what's going on down there, and Sheriff, I'm letting you know too, everybody know what's going on down there, and they need to stop.
He's arresting twice.
He's moved more campuses in, now he has it in, he's moved more campuses in, he's got a whole vehicle sitting in the road, you know, last time we went out there Sheriff, y'all, we sent the records down there. We all four, five off, but he got them back in the road, I was there last week.
Is they in the road, you saying they on the roadway?
One in the road, when you make that turn, he got it set like it was before, and it broke down.
It's on Southview or Pineville?
Southview.
Southview.
I'm gonna step out right now, and I'm gonna tell them, if it's in the roadway, go out there and tow it.
They was sitting in the road last week.
South.
In the L S, and it broke down, three days, and broke down.
So.
Yeah.
You gonna contact the state?
Talk to the Secretary of State right now, he's charged over that property.
Okay, let them know they got drug activities and everything else going down there. And, 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 they don't want to do nothing with their property, then we can't be held responsible if somebody get killed down there for drug, uh, activities down there, they need to be held accountable because we done notified them on several occasions. Uh, Ms. Stephanie, uh, M A S, M C supervisor dues, uh, did you pay, did we make a motion, get our dues paid?
We have to make a motion, they just, I made, we didn't pay.
They said they did not pay.
They said they not paid.
That's what I got. Oh, same here.
Unless, unless it wasn't my responsibility, I asked for that discussion before me, because I actually, I want you to say, because that, that meeting was paid. Ask for that discussion before me, because I actually, I want you to say, because that, that meeting was paid. Oh, I know. Because it's the.
And, uh.
The dues for M A S, M C, those dues have been.
Thank you, okay.
Uh, I did get a call from, uh, Mr. Wes Greg West, he said that the school district did approve for the boys and girls club to be stationed at uh, the middle school on M L K, uh, I don't know what is gonna happen this budget period, but, you know, I brought this to attention, and the city and the county is gonna have to, uh, appropriate some money for the boys and girls club, I don't know if they gonna get it running during this budget period, but if they do, we gonna have to come up with our own money or whatever, pay anything, uh, I did attend supervisor Hutchins, Martin Luther King, watching, uh. It gotta get back to where it used to be, I mean, it, it, it had quite a few people, but, uh, I know my trade didn't even participate, and I don't know why I'm asking, but it's very, uh, knowledgeable, and, and, and they bring up a lot of stuff there that the kids need to know about Martin Luther King and, and the black community. Uh, my sympathy goes out, um, I didn't stay for the film, but Mr. Wales, he was a character, man, I used to see the guy, he worked at the road department, I used to see the guy at Southside, and, and he just was a character, he just way, ah, 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 you gonna let me skip mine, I'm like, man, I can't let you skip all these people watching you. But, uh, he was a good guy, and, uh, uh, supervisor Gaines, and the county road department, Robbie and some of his workers was there, and my sympathy goes out to the Cameron, the King, the Davis, the Smith, the Griffin, y'all notice this list getting long every, every, every meeting, the Baker, the Cameron, the Bryce, the Shute, the Banks, the Jackson, the Jones, the Green, and the Johnson, and, uh, one of our, uh, citizen that made a great impact on Head Start pass, Mr. Lamar Braxton, uh, passed away, and my sympathy goes out to his family, and I think that conclude my report, and next week, I'm gonna give you a heads up, Scott, uh, I'm gonna get the information, but, excuse me, I'm gonna do a resolution for black history, and it's gonna be on this man right here. Supervisor Bobby Scobie was the first black supervisor in Adams County, so, uh, I've got some information coming from his son, and I'm gonna recognize uh, supervisor slash state representative slash that other job he had, he, he had a very positive impact on this community, especially this district that I'm in, as far as I know, was supervisor Scobie, supervisor Wes, supervisor Grinnell, and supervisor Gray, so, you know, when, when you in District Four, them, them some hard shoes to fill, but I'm up to it, so that concludes my report.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yes, sir, that's a motion.
Second.
Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion, all in favor?
Done.
All opposed, I said.
Before I move on, I want to thank everybody for, um, all the hard work during the lit, uh, storm we had, and I, I, I still believe that when we need our people in this community, they come aboard and they do whatever they can to help out, I, I just think if you put it out to these churches, white churches, black churches, who, whatever churches, we would have some people to come forward and, 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 uh, volunteer their time to help out, uh, just putting it on Facebook or something like that, everybody don't do Facebook, and I just think a letter needs to be sent. Like, like supervisor Hutchins said, we got all these organizations that need to give back to the community, that what better way to give back than, than in a time like that? You got fraternities, you got Masons and Eastern Stars, and they claim that they do this and they do that, okay, when the community need you, you need to step forward and volunteer your time, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
The first thing I'd like to do is amend January six minutes from the five hundred to one thousand for the Martin Luther King Youth Program, we just give a thousand dollars, I want to amend that.
So move.
Second, second. Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion, all in favor?
Alright.
All in favor.
And we did receive that certificate from, I have to bring it in here, I forgot to bring us a certificate, we did get us a certificate from. Uh, the second thing, yes, on Carey Road, this is where that savings is gonna come in, that I was telling supervisor Gaines about, um, but Carey Road and Martin Luther King Road, uh, it went down significantly, it was, Carey Road was two point five million, and, um, the project on, uh, Martin Luther King was two hundred and twenty thousand, Carey Road came down after damage survey report, after the damage survey report, Carey Road came down to nine hundred and ninety nine thousand seven hundred and fifty, and, uh, Martin Luther King project came down to sixty one thousand and fifty dollars. So now we'll only have to pay out ten percent, that was gonna be two hundred and seventy thousand, we only gonna have to pay now eight hundred and six thousand and eighty dollars, so that project is saving, and that project like a hundred and sixty three thousand from there. So, that was, that was for good, that was good. Uh, hmm, what you said?
Great.
That's right, yeah, okay, the next thing I have is, um, we need to get with Lynette, uh, the Mississippi Wildlife and Fishery and Park Grant that's come up now, uh, and, uh, the deadline for it is April the third, so we need to get something fast and put it in motion before April the third, we don't want to wait till April and then try to submit, we need to have it at least around in February or March, uh, something that we can submit to her, so, Stephanie, uh, uh, if you haven't gotten any information, I'll send it to you, and we just have to come up with something that we're gonna do to submit for that grant.
Will it cover the, uh, like, cover the rodeo ring out there?
Yeah, it will, what, what are you trying to get now?
No, I'm saying for y'all, will it, will that grant?
Yeah, it'll probably, something like that, yeah.
We need to.
We'll come up with something that we can use it for, you know.
Okay, I'll think about that.
Yeah. Oh, you gonna think about that one, okay, uh, the next thing I have is, I'd like to thank all the first responders, uh, for their hard work and dedication during our winter storm. Uh, appreciate them for their work, and, uh, also, I have that, um, on that Morgantown project, uh, Scott, have you sent to Senator Butler, I talked to Senator Butler, uh, last week, and he say he need whatever, the information that he's gonna get on that project, uh, he needed before the end of this month, and the deadline is the.
I've sent him previously, but I'll make contact with him direct and.
Send y'all all of them?
Yeah, that's why I said not just Senator Butler, all of them.
I mean, I've sent, sent it to him, but this guy might have a better.
Did he get it?
Yeah, I've been sending them stuff.
To Senator Butler?
For all of them.
Okay.
You got the right Butler?
Yeah, I think.
You were two butlers, I ain't said it for no joke, you had, you had the Butler from Conklin, Kelly Butler, now you got the Butler, the other Butler, Babbitt Butler.
I pull them up off their website after the legislative websites, where I get communication from them, and send them where their address is listed.
Alright, because he said he did need that, and he needed it good, because the city has already sent that information, and the way they gonna, with the way he's gonna go about it, he picking the best project, and he's only doing one per county, so, that he's up to see, so. We need to make it look good, and that's all I have.
Right, uh, well, uh, touching on that, uh, that funeral, I wanna, I actually wanna ask, uh, this emotion, I wanna, um, ask for a a resolution for the Wales family, for Jimmy Wales, with the service that he, uh, gave to the county, I mean, he was here long before I came here, and we, and we worked together earlier when I was at the county, um, back in two thousand eleven, he actually worked for me, uh, I, uh, well, worked under me as a foreman at a maintenance shop, and you know, we actually became, became good friends down there, I remember, all of us used to go ever, I don't know about the rest of it, but I know Robert could attest to this, every morning we used to, uh, read scripture and pray, every day, uh, down there at the county, we came in after I took over, as boss, I say, you know, cause it's a it's a, it's, it's a job, and, uh, so, and you know, he was there for me, I know, when I lost my, uh, both of my parents, he was there, anything that he was done, you know, he might not come by the man, he gonna show his face, but he was gonna make sure he was there, and I definitely, I found out, uh, after that, and I say, well, you know, I, ain't no way I could miss his, his funeral, not just because, but he was actually my perfect friend, he was gonna call me, and he still called me, Bob. Hey, Bob, hey, Bob, you know, so, uh, I'm gonna do that, make a resolution for the Wales family.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion, all in favor, all opposed, I said.
Alright, that second volume, I know we done asked for a lot, but I talked to the administrator, um, previously, um, asked about it, I know it was, I guess it'd be right about twenty thousand dollars, I mean, we gonna just put it on our mind, um, I hadn't mentioned it to Robert, but with the sheriff, he said, I was thinking, the guy came in here a few meetings ago and had those cameras, the sheriff from up there, and I was gonna ask the board, um, can we purchase about five of them, I think, that was, uh, and they have movable cameras and stuff like that, and I think that'll help, and that definitely will help with the sheriff, uh, because he said he don't have a problem writing tickets and persecuting, uh, prosecuting people for that, and until we start catching people, and it's till we start writing tickets, and don't get me wrong, it's a hard time, I wouldn't want to write nobody a ticket, but when you doing wrong, you doing wrong, you contain, contain a little, and until we set an example, that we are not gonna get any, uh, uh, any results, uh, from that, and believe it or not, I'm not gonna say out there pay for theyself, because after you write about five or six tickets, you gonna see some trash start being thrown out the window, when they figure out that they're getting ticketed uh, for that trash, but, um, I wanna put that up for discussion and see what the rest of the supervisors feel about that, because you know, we got some hot areas that we can move them in, and then we can possibly move them around.
Is this the guy that came?
The sheriff, that, you know, he came here about two years ago, and he was presenting to us before he got it up, and, uh, now he came back last year and presented, and showed us the video on, uh, how clear it is, and the guy's on the four wheelers and dumping trash and stuff like that.
The cell camera thing?
Yeah.
It was here just a couple months ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, like, yeah, so, he was supposed to bring us one.
He, he, I've been in contact with him, he mailed him back four, he's gonna put one.
Okay, yeah.
Put one out.
So he gonna put one, where we can just see how it work?
Yes, I did, I did, I mailed him back four, matter of fact, we pulled out, I emailed him, we talked.
Okay, put it already in the room.
So.
Red Loop, Broadmoor, I got a couple places.
We'll wait till he get the one, he gonna get and, and see how it work before we do that.
They gonna let them hotspot, so I mean, I just wanted to bring it to the board, so if he's gonna bring one.
Yeah.
That'll be, uh, that'll be fine, and, uh.
It'll be attached to a drone, it'll be flying all the time.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, we'll, we'll wait till they bring one, just wanna put it on the board mind, but, uh, one of the other things I do wanna bring, uh, and I wanna bring it up, and I know it's not, um, it's not our choice here, but I think something that we still need to fight for legislative, uh, uh, I'll have our state people look at, every time that we have any kind of disaster, the county and city workers, those people are first ones out and the last one to go home, and they say that they can't, that they're not first responders.
Well.
You got it straight?
Yeah.
We.
We got it straight.
We've got it straight with y'all board, y'all let, you know, let us do it, sheriff made us some badges, you know, to get around here, I say badges, cards to get around the first responders here, as a whole, they're still trying to make a stamp that we are, but, you know.
So, 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 that, that was my, that was my thing to the board, because if you look at it, and I know some of. and I know some of us follow traffic, uh, that's from the sheriff's department, that's from the ambulance service, that's from emergency management, when they have something, they need a counter worker to move a tree, they need a counter worker to bring some sand, they're the first ones, if they're not first ones out, uh, they gonna be the last ones going. And so I think that's something that we definitely need to, and it's just not for Adams County, I think we need to fight for it to stay, because all around, I mean, if you look at the news, we got record-breaking snow in the south, thank God that we didn't get that record-breaking snow here, but you had people all the way from Arkansas down to Louisiana, 'cause they wasn't equipped for to do it, and I think that's something that we need to mention to our legislature.
Supervisor Gaines, uh, it just me saying this, when we go to the winner conference, if you bring it up and get the body to agree to it, and then that, that way we can attack this from a, a, a statewide levels that are Adams County level, it might work better.
I'll do it, all right, well.
Now, y'all, they did declare, like, roadman's purpose. It's been declared, like, like a year or two ago.
Was it, Robbie?
It's, it's not.
You know, it's not on the state, they talked about it, but I don't think they really went forward with it for making it, I mean, counties did, you know, 'cause that's what was on board, we put a letter together, we sent letters, the roadman association sent letters up, you know, but I, I, I think it's.
We found out.
I thought we said, I think we need to touch on it and make sure.
Just verify.
All right, well, anyway, and that's, um, that's, uh, that's all I have for now.
Ms. Gaines.
Um, let's see, so George was not able to make it today, so he asked me to get this approved with y'all. So he is asking for the board president, um, to sign the construction account for the E W P project, C zero four four, which is Brooklyn Drive, Lofton Lane, and Churchill Road. Which is the state application. Second.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, sir.
And then the other one is to allow the board president to sign the pre-award documents for the E W P project that includes Carey Road and New Jerusalem Church.
So move.
Exactly.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye, sir.
And it's, yeah, it's.
Ms. Lewis.
I just have one thing to spread across the minutes, or to request, just spread across the minutes, it's, um, the final certificate for the, uh, D O R, for the real and personal roles as well as the, um, attached certificate, just need to have that spread across the minutes.
You heard the request, change your clerk.
So move.
Motion by supervisor. Gaines, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Slower.
I have a couple items to be determined. Uh, the airport is cutting down some timber on their property, the record title owner of the property is still Adams County, so even though we have a commission that runs it and so forth, we're the record title holder, the, uh, title attorney that does work applying on timber is asking the board to approve it, um, I've asked the airport director to get his proof of advertisement, listing bids for the cutting of timber, and this is something he talked about a few months ago, that he was gonna cut timber, I remember we gave him a little bit of extra money and so forth, I would request that the board approve the timber deed, subject to them giving us that proof of advertisement, that should have, should have that within a day or so, really should have a day, I'd ask them for it.
You heard the request of the board to turn, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion pending that the airport provide the legal documents that they need to the attorney.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, uh, Ms. Attorney. Quote you made about, uh, another attorney, what, what was that? Can I hear you say something about, uh, another attorney?
Yeah, I need somebody to do a title opinion for timber, to get it done, so I've asked him to do the title opinion on that. It's a, it's a record.
You kinda, uh, give me an example of what you're talking about, because I, I understand they gonna go cut some timber on county properties, so is this person gonna get paid to let them know the boundaries of our property? Or what, what is they getting paid for?
They get a pin, to give an opinion as to this real property, who it belongs to, who needs to sign off on it, it's just like getting a real estate transaction you have, that's all we do. We actually get them fairly regularly, every E W P would get a title opinion on it, most of them I do, but sometimes I'll ask somebody else to do, depending on time.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye, sir.
Supervisor Wilson has a request for family cemetery, and the paperwork is all in here, he's not here requested himself, this would be on Magnolia Acres Road, a request for seven three hundred square feet. Uh, that's personally one of the areas in very critical conditions, so that's why he wanted to request it, but he's requested now, uh, it's been a little while since we done them, but.
Is this his property?
It's in his district, I believe. Magnolia Acres Road.
Yeah, that's his district.
Well, that's the, uh, the people that live in the area, they, they cool with it?
They are the ones that are requesting it, and they have to sign off on the request, Jeff Daniel Lee, Junior, and Amy Gordon, and David L. Gordon, and it, it's the same paperwork, it's been some years since we've had them, but this is the same paperwork we've had them done in the past.
That's all over.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye, sir. How many more?
That concludes my report, Ms. Washington.
I'm the executive session, but we've got, and I just have a lead one, this is.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I need to, I need to get approved for one day stay before we go to the conference, because minority caucus meeting is one day before, uh, the regular M A S meeting, and, uh, I need to be able to be up there.
It's February the third.
A motion by supervisor Gray, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
I'm just, I'm one of them committed, so I need to be at the table to discuss.
All in favor?
Aye.
And what's the school?
One day, one night, four.
M A S Association, Minority Caucus, Minority Caucus, that's just one day, the rest of them are free.
Already been approved? Okay, I don't think so.
Ms. Vice President, I think we need to approve Mr. Gaines' truck, and then we decided to.
We did. I wasn't here. Hey, we said we got, we were trying, we did.
Yeah, yeah, we approved.
Y'all say, wait on here. I told you, I told.
He checked it, and then he came in.
Yeah, but we talked about it.
I think he didn't respond to it.
But.
He was.
We talked about it.
But we didn't approve it.
Okay.
'Cause I told Scott to text him.
We might be.
Oh, you was like.
So move.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I just wanna put this language in there, it's, it's the same truck that, it's the same truck that I'm getting wrecked.
It's the same.
Twenty, twenty twenty-four, 'cause the other one's gonna be in nine days.
Yeah. Yeah, I said, Ricky was getting life, and then you were getting a canary yellow.
All right, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hey, so, so I need to bring this back to the board, um, with, um, Scott was looking at, we had a few different options, everybody wasn't, I think it was three of us here, with the, uh, money for the employees that we had set aside, the options, uh, what we was gonna do, uh, for the employees, 'cause I mean, I've been hearing it, everybody's been asking and saying, well, we not gonna, you know, it's been saying, well, we ain't, they not gonna do it, they said it ain't hurt, but I told them we was working on a legal review, so we need to figure out what we gonna do with that money, and how we gonna get it dispersed.
Make sure it's legal.
Well, I know Scott.
I'll, I'll print back out the memorandum and we can go over it, you know, I forget through executive session, if you want, once you wanna talk about it.
Okay, well, that way it's good reporting, you print it back out so we can talk about it. We didn't try having it today.
Not one way.
Well, why, why we print it out? If it ain't legal?
Waste it to discussing the other options that we might.
Yeah, uh, obviously, it wasn't.
Okay, go ahead, 'cause, 'cause I, I, I thought, go ahead.
All right, um, in my folder, I have a letter from, uh, he didn't find it, he just, uh, there were three options. In my folder, uh, I had a letter from, uh, Dr. Middleton at Coglin saying Linwood Eastern League's terms will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, Mr. East, Easterling has been an effective member of the board since January twenty twenty-four, I mean, January twenty-two thousand four, we request that you consider reappointing Mr. Easterling or naming another person to fill this position.
So move.
Motion by supervisor Gaines.
Second.
Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Aye, sir.
If that's twenty.
Um, county.
But I know Mr. East, uh, Mr. East.
Yeah, see, you are, who made the reappointing notice.
Oh, is it? Oh, yeah. I had, I was, but I will.
You gonna talk to him, do it next meeting, or you gonna?
I, uh, I, I made the motion, uh, to report Michael Wynn, uh, back to the court commission pending his, uh.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, all in favor? All opposed? I think that's everything in this folder, um. All right, I need a motion, uh, to approve that everyone has written there.
Stop all.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by supervisor Gray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And supervisor Wilson's has not been signed yet, it's in this folder, too. I also would like to, uh, thank everyone for their efforts over the weekend and the storm, uh, we did dodge another bullet, uh, kinda, kinda crazy what they got down south. Uh, I do think we need to look at going forward how we're gonna approach this problem with doing a seventy-two hour notice on letting employees off, um, I, I understand it opens up a whole lot of things, kids and, and all that, I get it, trust me, but, uh, we, we provide services across the road here that people need access to the courthouse, and if we can work, we need to work. So, like Robbie said, there's, the easiest thing I think would be just to send an email out seventy hours before to county employees, and just, they're, they're grownups, they're responsible, they need to check their emails and, and show up to work, they don't, they're, they're doctor paid. So, uh, I believe, oh, also, Mr. Jimmy Wells, I do wanna talk about him, I've known Mr. Jimmy a long time, unfortunately hate, I was out of town for his funeral, uh, because I knew him long before I got on this board, and you're right, supervisor Gaines, he's, he's a trip, he's always a jokester, and, uh, he, he was, he was a great guy, and gave a lot of time to this county, and, uh, but that concludes my report. So we need.
Close to termination.
Motion for close to termination.
So.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, all in favor? All opposed? Aye, sir.